Good evening. The time is now 6:30 PM on Monday, January 22, 2024. I call the Lexington Select Board to order. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format via the application Zoom, allowing remote participation for the public. All members of the board are present in person. Members of the public can view and participate in the meeting from their device by clicking on the link provided in the meeting agenda. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Further, this evening's meeting is being broadcast live and archived by Lex Media for future on-demand viewing. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Members of the board are in person tonight. I'm Joe Pato, the board chair. Sitting on my right is Vice Chair Susie Barry and on her right Jill Hay. Sitting on my left is Doug Lucente and on his left Mark Sandin. Joining us from staff are Jim Malloy, the town manager, Kelly Axtell, deputy town manager, and also joining us remotely is Kim Katzenbach, the select board executive clerk. Tonight is a regular session of the board and we will be taking general public comments. Before we start the open public comments section of our meeting, I would like to remind all participants that we are neighbors and are working together for the best interests of the community. I ask that all comments be made with civility and respect and without casting dispersions or reference to motives. Open public comments are for items not otherwise covered on our agenda. Comments are allowed for up to 10 minutes. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. Members of the board will neither comment nor respond other than to ask clarifying questions. Remote attendees who have dialed in by telephone should press star nine to be recognized or click on the raise hand button in the Zoom application. When you are recognized to speak, please state your name, address, and any relevant board or committee affiliation. Tonight I will be using the Zoom timer feature to display the remaining time for a speaker. This is a two-minute countdown timer. When the timer reaches zero, I will interrupt and allow the speaker to finish their sentence. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment about an item that is not otherwise covered on tonight's agenda? If you are online, please raise your hand using Zoom or star nine. And there is a member of the public in the room. Please approach the mic.
Don McKenna, 9 Hancock Street. I just wanted to start on a happy note. I was privileged enough to attend the Chinese-American Association of Lexington events last night. And I really want to thank all of you in the room. They started their programming with this great drag and dance of which so many of you participated. And I thought it was a nice touch. I'm sure it was a little awkward for you, but it looked great from the audience. So thank you for showing the community you cared and doing that. And thank you especially to the town manager who had to come further to do that. So I really appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the room and seeing no indication via the Zoom application, we will move on. We'll go to select board announcements and liaison reports. Colleagues, tonight we have the Correspondence Secretary's report and no others. I will note that the correspondence report for this month captures all the mail messages until the end of the year, and then there's a recap by category for the year as a whole. Are there any additional announcements or verbal comments? Mr. Lucente?
Just this past weekend, we had the MMA conference. And I just wanted to thank and recognize our select board colleague Ms. Hay for, she did a wonderful job as president of MMA this past year, and she gave a wonderful speech at the Friday night dinner. And I thought it was really fitting and talking about all the complexities of our town government and town governments across Massachusetts. And thank you for your advocacy for us at the state level.
And for those of the members of the public, the MMA is the Mass Municipal Association. And this week was their, the annual conference, also known as the Municipal Geek Fest, which I have enjoyed attending for many years. Are there any other verbal comments? Ms. Hay?
I just wanted to report one thing from the Transportation Advisory Committee. There was a lot of conversation about obviously transportation, but a couple of things really stood out that I wanted to make sure the board was aware. One is that they have begun getting a number of concerns from the new 55, 53, 55 Water Town Street development requesting Lexpress service. And the point was made that the developer at the time declined to participate in Lexpress because they were going to be providing their own transportation. So they really felt that we should, as we consider other developments, really consider whether or not any opportunity should be foregone to have a development buy-in to Lexpress. And I know we're doing a lot of conversation about transportation, so I wanted to just bring that up. The other thing, and I think this may have been in Mr. Malloy's report, so if it is, I apologize. But I couldn't remember exactly, but I thought this was pretty exciting that they are looking at a grant application for a pilot program that would actually link from the transit station, the commuter station in Waltham through to Burlington, following along the B route of Lexpress, which if it is granted, would be only a one-year pilot, but it would give us some real information towards, you know, what kind of connectivity could do for us. So, and then other things I think were all sent directly to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Hay. Mr. Malloy, do you have a town manager's report this evening?
Yes, just briefly, I'd like to just take a moment to recognize and thank both Carolyn Koznoff and Rosalind Impink for all of the work that they did in getting the white book together. And also all of our staff. While the initial budget was a little challenging, everybody was up to the challenge and we made some, we looked at the budget in a slightly different way this year. And it provided some options for us that I think was, in the end, will actually be very good. And the other thing I just wanted to announce is that right now we have one open union contract that's been open since the beginning of the fiscal year. And as of last Friday, we have a settlement on that contract and that'll have all of our contracts under, all of our unions under contract up until the end of this year when we have two that open up.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. That's welcome news. Colleagues, we move on to the consent agenda tonight. We have 11 items. First is an application for one-day liquor licenses for spectacle management to be held at Cary Memorial Building. Second is an application for one-day liquor license for the Lexington Historical Society to be held at Buckman Tavern. Third is for town celebrations committee request to approve sending sponsorship letters for the 2024 Patriot's Day Parade. The fourth is to approve and assign Eagle Scout commendation letter for Alex Kang Lao. The fifth is to approve and sign water and sewer finals. Sixth is a battle green permit for the William Diamond Jr. Fife and Drum Corps for their annual tattoo and muster. The seventh is to accept committee, select board committee resignations. The eighth is to approve the town manager committee appointment. The ninth is for our board meeting minutes from January 8th. Tenth is the common Wittler license renewals. And the eleventh is a one-day liquor license for TV Bronx LLC doing business as a gallery house at 720 Mass Ave. Are there any items members wish to consider individually? Ms. Barry?
So I have a comment and a question. So on number three, town celebrations committee request to approve sending sponsorship letters. There are several duplicates in that list. I would hope that they could take those out. There's also several businesses that are no longer in business. I would hope that they could call that list a little further. Mr. Lucente, if you could take that message back to them, that would be great. And on number six, it is not clear to me, is the request to close the avenue in its entirety for them to march from the Green to Hastings, or they only getting one side of the road? My understanding is we typically close the avenue, it's an entirety just for Patriots' Day? And that other events, Little League parades, Memorial Day, Veterans Day usually get half the avenue, so I'm not clear on that.
Mr. Malloy, are you aware of the request?
I was not, but we will look into that.
I'm just thinking for staffing purposes, it might be helpful if we clarify that in the letter to them. That's all.
All right. So colleagues, are you willing to approve this as it stands with that annotation? So I move the consent agenda, Ms. Barry, for a second. If it moves in second at all, in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five to zero. Moving to items for individual consideration. Item number one is a public hearing with, for the intent to lay out Tucker Avenue as a public way. It is 6:40 PM and I open the public hearing. Mr. Livsy is online and will guide us through this.
Good evening. So as Mr. Pato had mentioned, it's a public, this is a public hearing regarding the intent to lay out Tucker Ave as a public way. The town has received a petition from, signed by all seven abutters to the unaccepted portion of Tucker Ave. The unaccepted portion of Tucker Ave is approximately 332 feet in length. And they are requesting that the town approve the road as an accepted way at the upcoming spring town meeting, annual town meeting. And they'd like to do it through the betterment process. The intent to lay out Tucker Ave as a public way follows the earlier notice of intent to lay out by the select board. And a notice to all the director butters had been, has been delivered notifying them of the select board hearing tonight. And that notice was delivered by constable. The estimated cost for the betterment is approximately $30,000. And the funding will allow, will allow the town through the engineering division to perform the improvements to bring the road fully up to town standards. And once the project is done, the actual costs will be charged to the director butters. And then just one point of note, in the petition from the butters, they have requested that number nine and number 15 Tucker not be bettered for greater than $2,000. And the, any additional charges will be divided by the other five abutters. So the town will be fully reimbursed. Just two of the butters will potentially be charged less than the others. So, so tonight's the public hearing and in a few weeks, if the intent is to go forward with the select board voting to lay out the public way.
Thank you, Mr. Livsy. Colleagues, are there any questions about this item? Seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll now open it for a public comment. Any member of the public who would like to speak, please come to the microphone in the room or use Zoom to raise your hand or star nine if you've dialed in by phone. We have Mr. Fairman online.
Thank you so much, the select board. Thank you so much, Mr. Livsy, for your help and the engineering department's help in bringing this petition forward and helping us navigate the process. Just confirming that all the butters are on board as, as the petition laid out our, our expectation for sharing the costs. And just a very quick confirmation, Mr. Livsy, that I believe the town's commitment is to cap the cost at $30,000. So in other words, up to $30,000 is the expected cost. If you, if you could just confirm that point, I'd be grateful. Thanks.
Mr. Livsy?
That is, that is accurate.
Yep. So all, all the butters are fully in favor and thanks so much to the select board for considering this.
Thank you, Mr. Fairman. Seeing no one else in the room or online, I'll go back to the board and see if there is any further comment. Seeing Ms. Hay?
I guess I just want to follow up on the, the last question, Mr. Livsy. If there is some untoward, unexpected issue when you get into the process, are we thereby agreeing that if it exceeds $30,000, the town will absorb that?
We are very comfortable that the $30,000 will cover the cost of the project. We are very conservative when we do estimates, particularly for betterment projects, knowing that it's a cost not to exceed. And so that the residents will be quite, be well aware that it's a cost not to exceed. So we typically on our betterments when the work is done, fall well below that cost. And this particular road does not need a lot of work. There's no underground work that's needed, so the chances of any unknowns is very, very slim.
Thank you. That, that was what I needed here. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Seeing no further comment, I will close this hearing at 6:45 PM. And as this was a hearing, there is no need for a vote today. We will have this back on our agenda in a few weeks to vote to move forward. This brings us to item number two, which is to discuss the potential relocation of the bus stop in front of Conti's Bike Shop at 1684 Massachusetts Avenue to a new area in Lexington Center. Mr. Livsy, you are going to carry us through this again.
Yes, thank you. And there is a small slide deck that goes along with this. So upon completion of the Sinister Streetscape project, there was, actually during the project, there was some MBTA regulations that changed as far as what they recommend for total length of bus stops. There had been prior to the project, as a, just a bit of a reminder, there was a bus stop in front of 1666 Mass Ave, which is the Clay Oven Building. And there were four spaces along that, four parking spaces along that frontage as well. And at that time, there were also six parking spaces along the frontage of 1684 to 1710, that frontage, which at the time was the building that includes Panera Bread and a few other, few other shops and restaurants. The bus stop at that time, that was in front of 1666 Mass Ave, was 40 foot in total length. Currently with the MBTA is requesting, with some caveats, depends on a few different things, but in general, they're requesting approximately 100 feet in total length for a bus stop. So at that time, a bus could not, if there were cars parked in all the spaces, a bus could not pull fully up to the curb to collect passengers, which is particularly difficult if there's passengers that have any sort of disability or trouble with high steps or things like that. Next slide, please. So with the Sinister Streetscape project, the bus stop was actually moved to, at the time, what was the Panera Bread shop, which can be seen in roughly the lower middle of this photo. The, the, in front of 1666, there was a crosswalk put in, kind of split the space that had previously been there through relocation of a crosswalk to a safer location. And in front of 1666, there's four parking spaces. One on the east side of the bump out and three on the west side of the bump out. And in front of the Panera, the old Panera Bread parcel, there were six spaces. The bus stop had removed three spaces. With the bus, with vehicles parked in those spaces, particularly the, the two closest to the bus stop, the bus is also unable to make it fully to the curb. So there are times that passengers can't, can't get on the bus the way they would, the way they should be able to get onto the bus. So that was brought to our attention by some residents in town, as well as the Senate Committee and the Commission on Disabilities. So it was 60 foot, so it was longer than the previous bus stop, but still was not the, did not meet the recommended guidelines by the MBTA. So next slide, please. So we looked at a number of different options. We probably looked at, ultimately probably looked at seven or eight different options, but some of them were clearly not going to work. So we did look at removing two additional spaces in front of, at the existing location, which would allow the bus to pull in. There were a number of reasons that people were not comfortable with that location. We also looked at moving it back in front of 1666 Mass Ave. There were concerns particularly from the numerous businesses. I believe there's over 20 businesses in that building with losing parking in front of the building. They would need to lose all three of the spaces that are to the west of the crosswalk. After looking at all the options and going through the guidelines, one thing that was clear in the MBT guidelines is what the, what they true, what they really prefer when you can do it is for the bus to pull up, to pull up to a bus stop without having to pull in to the space. So it makes it quicker for passengers to get on and off the bus. Makes it safer for the buses to get, to get to stop because they're not trying to pull out into traffic where they could potentially be pulling out into another vehicle or a bicycle. And it makes it, it definitely shortens the length of the route as they have more and more of those types of stops. The logical place to do that is right in front of drawing a blank, to the, the same, that Panera Bread building, but down the other end in front of 1710 and 1690, there's currently a bump out for the crosswalk. So extending that bump out so that it runs parallel to the travel lane, allows the bus to just drive, drive right up without pulling in and without needing to pull up, stop, get the passengers and pull on. It also gets, when there's a big grouping of passengers, it gives them a place to stand where they're not blocking pedestrians from using the sidewalk. And I have seen pretty large crowds waiting at the existing bus stop there. Up to a dozen people at a time that I have noticed. So if they're on the sidewalk, it can, it can get in the way of people that are using the sidewalk. We also ran this by the MBTA and they are, they very much prefer this option. And we met with the Senate Committee and we met with the Commission on Disabilities, actually multiple times with both groups to go over all the different options. And both of those groups landed on this option and voted favorably towards this option as the preferred option. So what we're asking is for the select board, if you have any questions, we can certainly answer those questions. But if you're comfortable with this location, we would like the select board to vote in favor of this location. And if we get a favorable vote from the select board, our intent would be to construct this in the upcoming construction season.
Thank you, Mr. Livsy. Colleagues, I see Mr. Sandin with his hand up. Thank you. So I'm the liaison to the Commission on Disability and also the liaison to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. And while the Bicycle Advisory Committee did not take a formal vote on this location, they did take a straw poll and were all in favor of moving to the location that's being proposed here. The Commission on Disability, as Mr. Livsy said, and I want to thank town staff for presenting to both committees several times and consulting and taking their comments seriously. The, as Mr. Livsy said, the Commission on Disability also unanimously supports this location, but they have also made a strong request that the town consider a bus shelter at this location as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Mr. Lucente?
I just first want to thank Mr. Livsy for his time and patience with this particular proposal. This was, there was a lot of meetings. I'm the liaison to the Senate Committee and I think there was at least five occasions in which we discussed this proposal, as well as the five or six other proposals that he studied, looked at, and he was really, this was a good study in, in town government, if anyone ever wanted to understand how town, town government works. This was really interesting from that perspective. But I do think after all the analysis, this really is the option that makes sense for everyone involved. And it really, you know, gives that extra space for the bus riders to not feel like they're impinging on the sidewalk. And I, so I think this one is the most sense for the business community, the bus riders, the pedestrians and the those looking for parking spaces in the center. So I think this is a win-win-win.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Ms. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Livsy. So you mentioned anticipated next construction season. I don't recall hearing anticipated cost or funding source.
The funding source would be out of the street improvements budget. And the estimated cost, we don't have a full cost on it yet, but it would be in the five-figure range.
So will that have an impact on any other planned work for the spring?
It will not. It will not remove anything from our proposed list.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hay?
Thank you. So I also want to echo the board's thanks for sticking with it and understanding the process and not giving up, no matter how many times we have to sometimes, pardon the pun, go around the block on things. I, I actually am, I'm, I'm really pleased on the collaboration that got us here because in my mind, this is where we should be, right? We're preserving shared spaces, we're ensuring safety, we're putting priority on public transportation and on our businesses. So I really think that this was very, very well done and I want to thank you for that. I have one question and that is just about the pinch point that we see with the left turn onto Grant. We've now made that even a little bit narrower. Do you have, from a traffic safety perspective, any concern?
We do not. That was actually brought up during the process. A typical, typically the bus stops for 10 to 15 seconds. And the bus spacing at, at the stopping is ranges between 30 to 60 minutes apart. So very seldom will you have a bus stopped here. You'll be, it's much more often you would have a car trying to parallel park there, which is a much more significant hazard to people trying to take that left onto Grant than the few occasions that you'll have a bus there. So we think if anything, it actually improves the safety of that turn.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you very much. I really, really appreciate this work. I think it's a good solution.
Mr. Lucente, you had an additional comment?
I forgot to thank someone else, Ms. Pam Lyons, for bringing this forward. This is really her noticing the challenges at the bus stop and bringing it to everybody's attention and, and getting this done. So again, even better part of our lesson for how public government works. Venus, we're going. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I am not going to repeat the accolades, so, but I appreciate the efforts by all involved. So colleagues, I will open this for public comment. We have Mr. Michelson online.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Jerry Michelson, Chair of the Lexington Senate Committee. As mentioned, our committee is unanimous in favor of this move. And just to add a little bit to the conversation is it really took us to take our meeting outside to that location and get out of the meeting room and off of the computer screens to realize that there was another option beyond the five others, six others that we had explored within the room. So that is definitely another important process of really getting into the, into the area, watching what happens. And that's where this came to this conclusion here. But we appreciate the, the engineering to even, even get this far on it and that was, was huge. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Michelson. Any other member of the public, either in the room or online? And please introduce yourself by name and address or any relevant committee or board.
Pamela Lyons, 51 Grant Street, Center Committee, but speaking entirely on my own behalf. I would just like to thank the Center Committee, Commission on Disability, the Tree Committee and the Bike Committee, all of, all of which committees were willing to put in some serious time and effort onto something that sometimes seems to many people small and boring, but is actually very important. One of the wonderful things about mass transit by bus is how many strands in terms of town government this involved. Trees, bikes, cars, parking spaces, pedestrians, wheelchairs, all different kinds of things come together in mass transit by bus, which is the intersection of climate change and social justice. I also want to very much thank the Engineering Department, which spent considerable time and, on this and was very patient and also came up with this progressive, it's not quite a novel approach, but an approach that is moving in the direction that mass transit is moving, as described already by John Livsy. And I thank the select board again for its willingness to entertain this as a serious item, perhaps taking up more time than we expected, but now it seems it's coming to a conclusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else online or in the room, there's, if Seeing no one else online or in the room, there's, uh, if you'd like to speak, please stand and come to the mic.
My name is Sharon Spalding. I'm the owner of sixteen sixty-six Massachusetts Avenue, and I live in Belmont. And I want to thank so much John Livesey, um, the town, the Select Board, and also the businesses at sixteen sixty-six Mass Avenue, all the businesses. I'm not sure if I said the Center Committee, and I agree, you know, um, Mr. Lucente, that it was such a community endeavor to come, uh, to this outcome. Um, and I want to thank you for respecting the businesses in Lexington and what they bring to your town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, seeing no one else in the room or online, colleagues, any final comments? Seeing none, I move to approve moving the bus stop location from sixteen eighty-four Massachusetts Avenue to sixteen ninety Massachusetts Avenue. Ms. Barry?
Second.
So moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Livesey. So brings us to item number three, which is to review increases to the town clerk's fees. We have, um, Ms. Aldredy, the town clerk, to lead us through this request.
I think I'm on now.
There you go.
So, um, in two thousand nine, the board voted the fees that were present at that time, and it's been quite some time. There's a lot more costs involved with paper and processing, and I feel like we should just up some of them a little bit nominally, um, in particular are what we call, um, the street list book. We're just adding three dollars to that. And, uh, one of the things that will be affected is the doing business as licenses. It is going up to forty dollars, but that is basically ten dollars a year because it is a four-year license. So we did, uh, review other towns in the area, including Arlington and Burlington and some others, and we feel that this is an appropriate change at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Dealdredy. And colleagues, you will see at your desk, our desk, uh, a copy uh, of each of the fees is also in the packet. Are there any questions about the proposal? Seeing none, I will open this for public comment. Anybody in the room who would like to make comment, please approach the microphone online, raise your hand using the Zoom app application or star nine if you're on the phone. Seeing none, I will move to approve the increase in town clerk's fees as presented at the tonight's Select Board meeting.
Second.
Ms. Barry, seconds. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dealdredy. Brings us to item number four, uh, which is the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting. Uh, Ms. Astel, the deputy town manager is going to lead us through this, but before she starts, I do want to point out that early versions of the agenda and our packet carried the wrong title for Article thirty-four. Uh, the correct title is amend tree by law tree protection plan. This has been corrected in the online copy, and if board members picked up their uh, packets this afternoon, you would have gotten the update. Ms. Astel.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. For the first two items in this agenda item, I would like to first present the moderator letter and ask, um, for a vote on that or discussion first.
Please do.
So yes, as we discussed last meeting, the moderator has requested that the Select Board call a hybrid town meeting. And the letter comes in separately for a vote this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Astel. So colleagues, as you recall, we took us a straw position last time. We were all in favor. Are there any questions on this item? Seeing none. There is a member of the public rising to the microphone. I will take comments.
Don McKenna Precinct Sixth Town Meeting Member. Um, I just have a question about the process for the public. Um, I think it's a very different experience for us to be hearing somebody reading the public's comments. And now that we're back to doing some, um, in-person, um, town meeting and, and really, in my opinion, should be the priority unless for some reason you can't. Um, I would like to see us get back to allowing the public to speak on their own behalf. Um, I can understand how it's a little more complicated if they're a hybrid person and, and from remote. Um, but in person, I'm hopeful that there is no reason why we can't allow the public, and I know that doesn't have to be determined today. Um, but I thought it was appropriate to bring it up in light of this letter, um, because it does seem to say that they can do that, but I might be misreading it, so I wanted to be clear about my thoughts. Thank you.
So just to remind everyone, we ran a hybrid meeting for the full special town meeting. Members of the public who attended the meeting in person were free to speak on their own behalf. They did need to come in person to do that. If they did not attend, uh, in person, then they had to submit their comments in writing to be read. And that is the plan for this annual town meeting as well. All right, colleagues, I see nothing, no one else online or in the room. I will move, um, to approve the town moderator's letters request, but approve the town moderator's request for hybrid participation for twenty twenty-four annual town meeting and to include uh, that letter in the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. None, it is unanimous, five zero. Right, this brings us back to Ms. Astel.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So the next up is the warrant, and there's two versions in your packet. One has the sentence of section B of Article thirty-four, uh, excuse me. Article twenty-nine, the noise bylaw, that's the delay of the, uh, leaf blowers for one year. So that's the vote that I'll need this evening, which warrant you would like us to move forward. I did want to make a comment that there is an article that was not in the draft warrant, which is Article fifty-one amend zoning bylaw maximum height for village overlay district.
Thank you, Ms. Astel. So, uh, Mr. Malloy, in your weekly report, you included information about the availability of gas leaf blowers. It was a fairly long piece. And I know I've had to skim it, so I'm not sure I took a conclusion from that material. Could you describe whether or not staff have found that there is availability of commercial-grade equipment, or there continues to be a lack of availability?
What I would do is I would defer to Dave Pincino, who did the research, and he's online.
Thank you, Mr. Pincino.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the availability is that if, you know, a handful of people went to buy, uh, the electric leaf blowers at the size and, and type that they want, that they would be available. Uh, if we had a hundred or so landscapers that all wanted a particular kind, um, then there would be a, a pretty good lead time, uh, in order to get all of those to a local distributor. Um, and that's how they, they typically operate. It would go through a local distributor. So I think it's going to depend on which model most of the landscapers settle on. Um, and understand they're not buying one or two for their landscape business. They're going to be buying, you know, ten, twelve. I mean, I think I, I identified, um, that just the DPW would need a, a significant amount um, to do what we would need to do. So, um, so that's all. It's, it's like if I went today, I probably could get three or four and put an order in for more. Um, but if a hundred people wanted twelve apiece, then that's a large order. Um, and you got to figure that you're doubling and tripling the amount of batteries for each uh, unit that you purchase. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's not that they're not available, but in bulk, they would not be available immediately.
Thank you, Mr. Pincino. Ms. Hay, you have a question?
Uh, no, I just wanted to add that at the Sustainable Lexington Committee meeting, um, this past week, they discussed this and, um, while they voted unanimously to support or not to support the delay, to support the original, um, deadline, they did talk about whether or not there would be a way to um, create some sort of a mechanism to allow enforcement to take into effect, uh, take into account the effect of somebody having a made a good faith effort. Um, they didn't get down the road on how that would work out, but that was the committee's position that if you could show that you had made an effort, that you had them on order, that you were in process, that there might be some, uh, way to defer enforcement.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Hay. Um, Mr. Sandin. So I, I just, uh, appreciate the, uh, the, uh, effort to take a look at the, that, and, and all the information that was provided in the packet, which I, which I did read. It was, uh, stuff I had never seen before. There's, uh, twenty pages or something of, of, of very interesting ways to, to address these issues. And, and the takeaway that I got from all that information is that there are now electric leaf blowers that have the capability, the performance that is, um, in fact, I, I looked up that in the packet, we had, they were quoting Pro Two, Pro Tool Reviews. And when I looked in the Pro Tool Reviews, uh, link that was provided, they rated this Greenworks BB three sixty-one, nine and a half out of ten stars, and they said, this is a quote, perhaps more importantly, the most popular backpack blowers are under that reaching in the mid to high thirties. That's exactly the performance level these are claiming. And so I also appreciate the fact that going out and looking for these leaf blowers, they are all available and, 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 uh, from multiple sources today. So there's a, so I appreciate, uh, uh, Mr. Pincino's comments that you're going to need to buy more than one or two or three at a time, but there is a year of time between now and when these are needed. And with multiple leaf blower, electric leaf blowers that are at, operating at the performance of the most popular backpack gas leaf blowers, I think, uh, I would, I would, uh, support Sustainable Lexington's, uh, position that we should not be putting this on the warrant. Thank you, Mr. Sandin. Uh, Mr. Lucente, and then I have a comment.
You know, I've talked to several landscapers, um, who have attempted to order some equipment and found frustration and difficulty. This is within the last month. Um, and it's not just the equipment, but the batteries that they need to sustain using them for the entire day, which is, which is really their goal is obviously to stay in business for the entire day. Um, and ultimately that's, you know, benefits their customers who are Lexington residents. You know, uh, when we, when this came up at town meeting, it was very clear that the concept of pushing this back if it wasn't ready was on the table, although this was drafted on the floor of town meeting. Um, I, I, I'm going to fall on the side of at a minimum, leave it in the warrant and let town meeting decide. I don't think we have anything wrong with, if the town as a whole says we don't care that the, the supply issues, um, or it's not a thing we want to consider, let town meeting who drafted this now take a crack at saying we're either going to or not going to, um, try to extend this. I think that's our best approach. I don't see why we wouldn't give them that opportunity to make that vote and make that decision. So send it up to the big house.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lucente. Uh, so I, um, I, I, I've been on both sides of this question throughout our development of the warrant, uh, in my own mind. And, um, I, I'll start by saying that in that packet, there was quite a bit of very interesting information, and part of what I found very interesting was the recommendations for adjusting the way leaf collection is done in, in with, with, uh, approaches that require less, um, force in the leaf blowers to be effective. And those approaches, which are more recent, actually make it so that there's quite a bit more, um, usable equipment on the market out there. That said, um, I, I personally am disinclined to extend the deadline, but I'm perfectly willing to have town meeting, meeting make that decision. So I would keep it on the warrant and let the decision be made at town meeting. Um, Ms. Barry?
Thank you, Mr. Pato. Um, excuse me. So I'm just curious, has any of this updated information been shared with the landscaping community?
No, not, not unless Mr. Pincino has done it.
Okay. Um, so I think, you know, we
worse, I'm sorry, or our sustainability resilience officer may have done it as well, but I'm not aware of that.
Okay. So I, I just kind of want to put out there. I mean, we're looking for them to change the way they do business, yet we're, if we're not helping them, that's kind of a little bit of a problem, including them into some places. Um, I'm also incl- inclined to leave it on the warrant and let town meeting decide.
Ms. Hay.
So, um, I guess that actually, I hadn't thought about it in those terms, but I think that makes a lot of sense. I mean, this is something that town meeting did amend on the floor. Um, and then we put to the town and the townwide referendum said yes. So I think it is something in which the broader, certainly broader than the five of us, uh, population of town has, um, a vested interest. And so I think leaving it to town meeting to make the decision makes a lot of sense.
All right, Mr. Sandin. So, uh, I'm, I'm kind of hesitant. Uh, I, I guess I'm kind of confused, maybe is a better word to say about the argument that because we brought it to a townwide referendum, we ought to be bringing it back to town meeting. For me, we had a town meeting vote, then it went to a townwide referendum where the entire town had a chance to vote on it. So it seems to me that the whole town has voted and that we would need overwhelming, um, uh, proof that there is a reason to be bringing this back to town meeting because the whole town voted on this. So from my perspective, I think for that very reason that Ms. Hay is bringing up, that there was a townwide referendum, that I think we need extraordinary sort of reasons to bring it back to town meeting. Um, because the will of the people has been expressed, uh, at a townwide level, and that's not going to be the same as, as at a town meeting vote. So, so I hear you, Mr. Sandin, but by putting it on, leaving it on the warrant, we're not predetermining what town meeting will decide. And the hundred and eighty-nine elected town meeting members have heard the townwide referendum as well. So I would expect that it would be if individual members of town meeting would have to really be convinced that this deadline should be extended. But I think it is uh, appropriate to give them the opportunity to vote on it. Uh, and that's, you know, they're not in any way nullifying the desire of the community in having voted to uphold the action of town meeting. But it is the, the, the government process we have to verify are conditions changing? Are the, is, do we need to react or, or not? So, um, so I'm, I'm comfortable in leaving it on the warrant. Any further discussion? Um, so we'll take a, I think we'll, we'll take the vote when we actually approve the we, would you like the vote right now, Ms. Astel?
I would like a vote on the warrant, yes, and then we'll go into the, um, presentations.
Very good. So I move uh, to approve and sign the twenty twenty-four annual town meeting warrant uh, with the gas leaf blower prohibition delay item and authorize staff to make non-substantive edits as necessary or as recommended by town council.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Is four to one. All right. And Ms. Astel will continue.
Thank you. I would like to make one comment about Article forty-four. Um, the proponent will be IPing this article, so I shared that. He asked me to share that with the board today. He's working with the Bike Advisory Committee, and they are looking, they want to possibly look further at the wording. So just so the board is aware, um, Article forty-four has been removed from the presentation, from the presentation schedule. Thank you. um, Article 44 has been removed from the presentation, from the presentation schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Axel. And just as a reminder, it remained on the warrant because it was a citizens article and we can't, we have to put a citizens article once it's been, um, certified. All right. So Ms. Axel, should we move now to presentations?
Yes, that would be great. So first up is Article 10. And as I have explained, um, to the proponents, yes, she said, um, and to the, and asked of the board to review the materials and review the videos. So the proponents are not planning on presentations this evening. They're here to answer any questions that, or clarify anything that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Axel. So colleagues, the, the ball is in our court. Uh, this is Article 10, the Community Preservation Act, uh, requests. Does anyone have a question on any or all? Mr. Lucente?
I, I have a question. Uh, this may be something I should know, but I want to put it out there. So the warrant has $4 million for the library project in it as a, as a stated number. The presentation states that it's 2.3 million with 1.7, you, you mentioned 1.7 coming from additional funds. When we vote the warrant for the CPA, are we, are we voting to split that up in the, in the motion?
Yes, Mr. Lucente. So the motion that will be, that is written under the CPC will have each, um, funding source spelled out in it, but it will be under the, um, CPC.
So we, one vote, but split out?
That is correct. In the motion will be split out, yes.
I wanted to double check because I thought maybe the warrant has a typo, but, um, all right, that's helpful. And then my second question was, um, on Article 10E, which is to replace 10E, which is to replace, um, a court surface. I was just trying, hoping to get a little bit more information on what, what went wrong. If I heard the presentation correctly, it was recently replaced. I don't remember it being replaced, but I'm sure we did vote that. Um, and I just wanted to get an understanding of what went wrong and how do we prevent this from happening again? Um, and is there any warranty for this work that was done because it wasn't that long ago? And, you know, what was the cost the first time? Sorry, I have a lot of questions, but I'm glad Ms. Batid is here.
I am very glad she's here as well. I would, I'll let her handle this one.
Good evening. Yes. So the resurfacing took place in '21. The last time the courts were fully reconstructed was in '09 or '10. It typically a resurfacing would last longer, but in this case it did not. So it is a one-year warranty for resurfacing, but the reconstruction of '09 or '10 is right in line for reconstruction, similar to what we just did down at Center Rec.
Okay. So it was a Band-Aid fix to see if we can get more life out of it.
It's tip, that's the typical, um, repair that you do. And what happens with, uh, tennis courts with the asphalt as they start to crack, um, you can patch them, but the crack continues. So, um, we had them reviewed probably in September of last year or August. And the, um, company said, if you've put any more money into it, you're just, it's just wasting money at that point. So that's why we brought it back as a recommendation to the Recreation Committee for replacement.
Okay. That's very helpful to understand what happened. Appreciate it. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lucente. Colleagues, any other questions? Ms. Barry?
Uh, it's not a question. It's just my thanks and appreciation to the CPC committee. I sat in on a few of your meetings earlier this year and you guys get through a lot. And so thank you for your dedication and commitment.
Ms. Barrett, one of these years, we should make you the member from the board who attends. It is, uh, quite a, quite a load. Any others? Seeing none, we will move to the next.
All right. So the board- I would just like to echo like what was said on the, on the town process on the, uh, on the bus stop for the CPC, we had town staff almost at every one of these meetings, multiple members of town staff coming for every one of these meetings. And there's incredible amount of effort that goes into this. And so I appreciate that.
As well as the volunteers who are members of the committee. Thank you. Moving on to the next series of tree articles.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Pedo. I would like to ask the board if you want to do 34, then 35, then 36. Or just do, ask questions about all three of them together. Ms. Sofran is here. Sofran? Excuse me. Sofran. To answer questions, all three are from the tree committee. So.
So colleagues, I, I suggest we, we focus on one at a time, just to keep our, our comments not on point. And so let's start with Article 34, which is to amend the tree bylaw for tree protection plans. And I will say I am the liaison to the tree committee as well as to the working group on, on, on by law enforcement. So I have no questions. I'm very familiar with what you're proposing, um, colleagues.
And I would just say that I appreciated the tree committee reaching out one-on-one in, before this, and I had a number of questions, which were all answered. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barry.
So I have questions and I appreciate you guys reaching out. And as we know, um, I was, I think the first one you met with. And that's when titles hadn't been changed yet. Um, and I will just say the draft warrant that went out to TMMA had the wrong title.
I understand. And I reached out to TMMA and let them know.
Okay. Um, so a couple of things in your draft motion, under D1, I think it's D1, where it talks about if a, um, tree fails and then it goes into mitigation. What's the mechanism that allows us to require mitigation at that point? Like, how do we have any skin left in the game?
I would assume first that someone would have to notice that the tree had failed and report it to the DPW. As far as-
My point is, the tree dies.
Yes.
And we go back and say, okay, you have to do mitigation on this. And they go, like, what's our enforcement? Mr. Malloy, maybe you get what I'm trying to ask here. Like, what compels the people to do this a year later? Is there anything? Legally? Is this enforceable? Maybe I'm not asking the right question.
So let me see if I can interpret your question. So the question is, what gives us the right? The bylaw would give us the right. The question is, how do we enforce it?
Yes.
Whereas, eh, eh, when you are holding a certificate of occupancy, it's easy to enforce. If there is a fine, it is enforceable. Um, and I believe, Ms. Sofran, could you verify, does this go back to the, you need to apply the mitigation payment or replacement tree?
That is exactly right. And it, and, and it is the owner of the property that's required to do that.
Right.
So, so there would need to be an understanding between the builder who sold that property, if in fact it was a builder who then, who then sold it, and the new owner, that those trees need to be kept alive for one year from, from the issuance of certificate of occupancy. And this is a very common requirement in, in many towns' tree bylaws. It is admittedly not easy to enforce.
That's my point.
And we expect that some might slip through, but we hope that they will not. And at the very least, it gives notice that you'd better take care of your tree.
Okay. I just, I just don't want to set us up the town for failure.
I understand.
If you get what I'm saying. Um, and then under E5, on the third line, when it talks about the, um, uh, Stop Work Order, is being performed contrary to any applicable tree protection plan or any provision of this chapter, such work shall be immediately stopped by the building inspector. I don't like that wording. Um, because we, we, or whomever, can't dictate the building inspector's work. Shouldn't it have some other wording there? Because the tree committee doesn't control the work of the building inspector or the tree warden.
That I can say, I know that the building inspector last week raised a concern about that as well. So it may, may really need to be the tree warden who has that authority, not the building inspector.
Um, may I, may I say, Mr. Pinceno has raised his hand. He may have an answer to this.
Mr. Pinceno?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, here. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so town council is looking at this. They raised the same concern. Um, so I think that, uh, town council will be proposing some different wording for this section.
Okay. Again, I'm just trying to make it so that what we think we're approving here is actually actionable and we know who's responsible for what. And we know how the process is going to flow. Like, if you think of it like a flow chart, where are we going when something happens? And whose responsibility is that? Um, and then my other question is, you talk about this is for major construction. Is there any definition of what defines major construction?
Yes, it is, um, it is a demolition, um, and new construction, or the increase of a building's footprint by 50% or more.
And is that within your bylaw or is that defined somewhere else?
It is defined in the bylaw.
So you might want, I don't know if you're going to amend your presentation, but you might want to put that somewhere so people understand ahead of time what this means.
Thank you.
Um, and then my other question, I guess, Mr. Malloy, this is for you. What would the impact of this article be on staff? On the tree warden or inspectional services, the building commissioner? Have you had a chance to evaluate that?
It, it's something that I would, um, defer to Mr. Pinceno about, but it's part of the discussion we've had as far as adding the additional staff person in the, um, Assistant Superintendent's role.
Okay. So I'm going to put you on the spot and you can defer or not answer. Are you comfortable with the wording in this bylaw, understanding town council may tweak it a little bit in relationship to staff's existing workload? Versus adding an undue layer?
That I did speak with Mr. Pinceno about last week, whether or not he was, um, okay with the wording as it was, and for the most part he is. And so I don't see that as a, a major issue.
Okay. It says, I, I saw his-
And went back down. I think Mr. Malloy, uh, said what he was about to-
Okay. That's all I have on 34. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments on Article 34? And seeing none, we'll move on to, um, 35. So 35 is, uh, requiring mitigation planting in certain instances. Ms. Barry?
So on 35, is there any, um, requirement for size of tree that gets planted?
The, the requirements for tree planting is, is the same as what's already in the bylaw, which is that satisfies the requirements for mitigation. So if you-
Okay. So I'm someone who knows nothing about trees.
Sure. And so-
Or I'm sitting in town meeting and you say that and I'm going to go, I still don't know what that means. So I'm just kind of giving you heads up that you might want to put some more wording of that into your slide and your information.
So the, the, the bylaw has written already has set requirements for what type of tree replanting would satisfy, uh, the requirements for mitigation, regardless of whether it has to do with the mandated tree planting in the front or elsewhere. Right? This, this additional requirement is saying that, you know, following those conditions, you would be, you would be required to plant accordingly.
And Mr. Pinceno has a comment. Mr. Pinceno?
Okay, I got it. The, the button didn't come up right away. Can you hear me now? Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So, so the, the requirement as it stands in the byline now is a three-inch tree is what's used as the replanting. And that would remain the same. It's just directing that more of those trees be planted on the property.
I would just recommend you include that in your presentation or when you're talking to groups. So people aren't confused. Um, and then my other question was in your, in one of your slides, I think it was near the end, it talked about, um, a monetary credit being given. Can you tell me what that means?
Uh, the, the monetary credit was, uh, meant to evoke the same credit that you get for mediation tree planting anywhere else on the property. Just to say that you either have to pay a certain amount into the tree fund. And as you plant trees, you get credit towards that mitigation payment. It is not credit above and beyond, uh, what you already have to pay.
But this is not a credit where the town is paying something to the homeowner?
It's not.
Or the builder. I might want to clarify that.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to number 36, which are exemptions. Questions or comments? Ms. Barry?
Sorry. Um, so I think I understand what you're looking to try to do here is actually define hazard.
Yes. So where does the definition come from that you're, that you had in your presentation?
The International Society of Arborists.
Okay.
Um, but, well, they, they have a tree risk, a two-page tree risk assessment form that gets filled out in great detail. And at the bottom of it, there is a rating, an overall tree risk rating of low, moderate, high or extreme. And we would define, it's not so much defining what is hazardous as defining what is exempt from the bylaw on base, on the basis of its hazard risk. And we would say that any tree that is at high or extreme overall risk should be exempt from the bylaw.
Okay. Again, I would just say you might want to say definition of hazard by the arborists. You know, give a notation to it. Um, and the other thing is, I think I heard within your presentation, there was something about the tree committee wanted to direct staff. Um, and I get a little uneasy when we have committees trying to direct staff. So, Mr. Malloy, Mr. Pinceno, I'm assuming town council picked up on that one too. On 36.
I would ask, um, Mr. Pinceno.
Okay.
And I-
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Pinceno, go ahead.
Okay. Can, uh, can you just repeat the question, Ms. Barry?
Uh, so, Mr. Pinceno, when I was listening to their presentation, their video presentation, at some point they talked about, um, and I put this in quotes, so I'm assuming this is what they said. We would like to, and they were, then they were talking about, I think, the tree warden or directing staff to do some type of work. Again, I don't want to set anyone up for failure here. So maybe just re-listen.
Yeah, I'll, I'll re-listen and, and speak with town council, but the, the committee, uh, makes recommendations to staff, does not direct staff.
Correct.
So we'll, we'll have that discussion.
And then just my last question on, that kind of goes with 34 and 36, I think, is both of them have a part in the, um, in the motion to amend one 20-3 definition, Section A certified arborist. Does it need to be in both places, in both motions?
Uh, we've already discussed that with the moderator. Um, and I believe it will be, actually, I think we're still in discussions with the moderator about that.
Town council.
Okay. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
It would be an issue if one failed and then the definition wasn't there for the other one that passed. Right. All right. Uh, any final comments or questions about the collection of tree bylaw changes? And colleagues, because I didn't have the table for, I wasn't planning to take our positions tonight. Let this sit in your mind for the while. We will come back to those positions. But if there are further questions along the way, please let, uh, staff know and the proponents. We'll move on to, uh, the citizens petition, I think.
Yes. So Charlie Wyman, um, will be presenting Article 37, the importance of trees, where's, and the importance of trees, a resolution.
Mr. Wyman? So, so the, the, the board has seen your presentation. Colleagues, are there any questions or comments? Ms. Barry?
See, this is, I did my homework. Um, so I think you just don't have questions. I was the first one people talked to, sorry. Um, so I'm, good evening, Mr. Wyman. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Um, so I just have a question. In your presentation, at some point you talk about setting goals and metrics.
Yes.
Can you talk some more about that? And then where is that information going? Who's collecting that? What is it getting used for? How are, who's defining it to committees and departments?
So I, I, I think, um, a major vehicle for doing that is something that I know Mr. Pinceno is planning and a number of us are very supportive of, which is, uh, the, uh, creation of an urban forest master plan sometime in the next couple of years. Um, and our hope is that that plan will be specific about where we need to go and how we need to get there. Um, and that from that plan, um, either in the plan or from that plan, departments can set metrics that will allow us to achieve the goals of the plan. We're, we're eager to see- We're, we're eager to see, um, clear goals and metrics by which, um, departments and committees can sort of measure progress towards those goals.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is referring to the urban forest plan that has not yet been developed? This is not referring to something else that has not yet been identified or developed?
I, I would say primarily that, um, there may be goals that departments or committees set in the meantime or, um, in addition to the plan that, you know, um, require metrics to be able to achieve those goals, you know, the climate action plan that was adopted, um, um, approved by you back in the fall, um, also has, um, general goals, I'd say, for, um, improving our tree canopy. And as we look at implementation of that plan, there may be more specific goals and metrics to achieve those goals that develop out of that implementation process.
Okay, so now it's over to Mr. Malloy. You can guess what the question is. So based on kind of Mr. Mr. Wyman's answer, do you see any extra work being added to the staff on this that makes you uncomfortable or any concerns?
Not, not that I see any added staff. I think that, um, as Mr. Wyman said, um, one of the things that we, we will want to see out of this is an urban forestry plan that would be developed. Um, because there's a lot of varying opinions about whether or not it's good to plant a tree in that grass strip. Or whether it's better to plant the tree somewhere in people's yards, um, where the tree has a better chance of surviving and not being hit by a car, plow, or salt and all the other stuff that, uh, impacts the lives of trees. And so I think that that's the kind of information that we need to get out of that kind of a plan is where that will be planted. And I know that Mr. Pinceno has a, a, a good feeling that it should not be right along the, the streets, that that's not the greatest place for trees, that it'd be better off onto the property some. So I think that it's important to develop that plan, have a wide, um, uh, group of people who participate in that and, um, then follow that plan.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to find out if there's any unanticipated work here for staff, because we've seen that happen in the past with some town meeting articles and been a little unprepared. Um, and then the second thing I just want to say to you and your other tree friends in the front row is as Chair of the Semi-Quintennial Commission, I would love it, love it, um, if, uh, you all took on planting two hundred and fifty trees, um, between now and the two hundred and fiftieth, and, uh, Mr. Paul, please take a breath. You looked, when, when I said that, you looked like, oh, no, breathe. It's a good thing. We can do this. So I'd love to have that conversation with you guys.
We would love to have that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Sort of like the three-hundred plan?
Yes, and, uh, and I just want to point out that when talking about not planting necessarily in the the area between the sidewalk and the street, we're still looking for trees to be in the front setback of lawn so that we create an urban canopy on the streetscape and cool the area. So it isn't just random plantings everywhere on, in backyards. It really is about creating a street, street front. It's just whether or not it is in that narrow strip that is often getting salt or other, um, potential damage. Mr. Lucente?
Thank you, Mr. Wyman, for bringing this forward. Um, similar question of what Ms. Barry was asking about, you know, where do we go from here? Because I, I think I've also found that resolutions, I always, I don't know, yeah, that's, that's the problem. But then we tend as a board and as a community to take them a little bit like an unfunded mandate that we say, oh, now we've got to go do this. We've got to hire DEI, or Chief Equity Officer, we've got to do Sustainability Director. We've been very reactive to these resolutions when they've passed. So the questions that I have are sort of forward-thinking, and maybe they're more from Mr. Malloy, but you may have answers on this as well, is wh-what does, uh, um, one of these master plans cost? Is there a cost associated with that we could share with town meeting to just understand what that might entail? And then I would love to know what does it cost to implement, uh, one of these, you know, master plans? And, and maybe that's a more difficult answer if there's no, um, master plan built, you don't know what it's going to cost, but, you know, I think it would be helpful to share, you know, not just the sentiment of, I, I've never met anyone that says I hate trees, you know, I, maybe there are people out there that hate them, maybe people that only own farmland and don't want any, your trees in the way, but most people I know like the trees. They like healthy trees too, the ones that won't fall in their home. Uh, but I think it, it's, it, it just gives us the, the benefit of the full story of, you know, imagining what could be, um, but with real, real numbers that we can plan on rather than, you know, we have a reaction that we have to take and we're not doing the planning part till a year from now, where we say, well, we passed this and now it's budget time, let's, you know, what are we going to do about it? I, I'd, I'd love to have a little bit more information on that. If you have any, feel free to share.
Yeah, um, I would ask if Mr. Pinceno is still on the line. Um, I know he's been thinking, um, a, about an urban forest master plan and, and, um, trying to make it happen in the next year or two.
Mr. Pinceno, you should be able to unmute.
Okay, um, yeah, we anticipate, uh, the master plan somewhere in that fifty to seventy thousand dollar range. Uh, we are pursuing grants from the state for that. Uh, they do provide grant funding, uh, specifically for urban forest master plans. Um, so that's what we're looking at. As far as your second part, Mr. Lucente, a lot of it is just going to depend on what the plan outlines. So I wouldn't be able to give you a ballpark, but we will be able to use that as a tool then to go ahead and plan the budget moving forward. And it wouldn't be an all at once. It would be, you know, implementing parts of that plan as we move through various, uh, years of budget cycle, but it would give us a roadmap to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Pinceno. Thank you, Mr. Wyman.
Mr. Sandin?
So, uh, well, Mr. Pinceno is still on the line. I seem to remember, Mr. Pinceno, that you and Mr. Valente came before the Select Board, maybe six or eight months ago, and said that you were quite interested in doing an urban forest master plan at that time, am I recalling correctly? When you were presenting about the, the, uh, canopies survey?
Yeah, so that, that is correct. A couple pieces that we had to have in place in order to move forward to a master plan was the, uh, tree inventory and a canopy study. So now we're, we're working at, uh, looking at timelines for the state grants and things like that, um, so that we can go ahead and apply, uh, for that to, to work on the plan.
So the only other comment I have to Mr. Lucente's comment about costs and, and that's, it's important that we look at costs, but, I'm reflecting on the fact that there are very few things we can invest in that have a higher return on investment than a tree. And, uh, both in terms of quality of life, in terms of public health, in terms of in actual resale value of our homes. Uh, so I, I really, there are things of beauty which doesn't have, uh, uh, return on investment that you can measure in GDP dollars, but makes life worth living. So thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just add, you know, Mr. Lucente was absolutely right in saying that resolutions, while someone might come to town meeting and say, eh, it's just words. They really are establishing the, the core principles and directions the community is asserting. And I wouldn't have said we are reactive to it as much as we hear that the community wants something and we take that as a goal that has been set for the board for us to work on moving forward. And the resolution itself didn't spell out specific actions, changes by laws or et cetera, but it's set the context for us to work on those kind of things for years to come. Uh, so we absolutely need to take them seriously, but they're a good thing for us to hear as a community, what are we all supportive of? And we have to all keep in the back of our minds, nothing is for free, right? But when it's a priority, it sets the stage for what we work on. So thank you.
And that is exactly our, our purpose and intent in bringing it forward.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments on this resolution? Seeing none, uh, Ms. Axtell?
So that concludes what we were, wanted to speak with you tonight about. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Um, colleagues, uh, you would have noticed in the packet, there was a description that we might talk about uh, assignments and, and take positions. As I said before, I have the table in here, so I have not made those assignments yet, nor will we take any of the votes tonight. I, for our next meeting, I will have filled out preliminary assignments for you and you can, uh, uh, tell me why I was wrong. So let's, uh, let's move on to item number five. Uh, well, actually, it's, we've been at this for an hour and a half. Does anybody need a break for five minutes or do we continue? We're making good progress. All right, so let's, um, let's move on to item number five, which is the town manager's preliminary budget and financial planning, also known as the white book, which was referenced earlier tonight. So this is the preliminary budget. Mr. Malloy?
I'll, excuse me, I'll go ahead and kick it off and then I'll turn it over to, um, Ms. Koznoff. Uh, so I am just going to talk about some of the highlights in the budget. Um, number one, the budget is balanced. That's always a good thing. And it was within the provisions of Proposition Two and a Half. It's just under two hundred and ninety million dollars in the general fund. You know, as the board, uh, was aware, the budget was originally balanced, but we didn't have a lot of funding for PIRs. And so, um, I undertook a review of all of the unexpended balances and looked at trends over the past couple of years and made a number of, um, suggested budget cuts, which I then sent out to all of the senior managers, take a look at, comment on, and, um, provide, uh, feedback on. And from that, we were able to develop a, um, an amount that combined with using some ARPA funds for mostly one-time expenditures, where we are funding a little bit more than half of what was requested, um, by the PIRs, almost three-quarters percent. Um, let's see, what else did I want to hit on? We do, um, we did add some new positions that we're recommending as part of the ongoing PIRs that are being funded by the general fund. Uh, these are related to, as we were just discussing, the trees and also the noise bylaw that was adopted by town meeting, as well as some of the increase in development. And these were things that were identified by the board as priorities and funding. Uh, we have set aside five hundred thousand dollars for the two hundred and fiftieth. We are dealing with some of the sustainability issues by funding EV charging stations and an evaluation of solar canopies at a park, uh, in the parking lot, not in the park, part of the parking lot. Um, and as well as it looking at expanding food waste collection. Uh, we have, uh, accounted for ten million dollars for the Lexington High School design. Uh, the Cary Library Children's Room renovation, HVAC work, Pine Meadows, uh, clubhouse renovation to meet some ADA requirements, Lincoln Field, um, updates, funding the Affordable Housing Trust. And then right now, we have it so that there is funding in the budget to address the renovation of one seventy-three Bedford Street, but as the board is aware, we've also put out an RFP looking for leased space for that same amount of space. And then we'll be providing a recommendation sometime later in February to the board on which, which course of action we think is best course of action. I did, I think, at one point in time, point out to the board that, um, the six million dollar figure that is in the budget includes converting the building from natural gas to electric HVAC. Without that in it, it becomes about a four-point-two million dollar project, I believe Mr. Cronin has indicated. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Koznoff to talk about more of the details in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Malloy. Um, and a lot of the points that I was planning to cover are also, um, Mr. Malloy went through some of them, but, um, I just wanted to say a couple of things. So first, before we even start, I just wanted to thank Rosalyn Impink, who is here with me tonight, um, to go over the budget. This is obviously a several hundred-page document. It's an enormous amount of work. Um, she came in right as things started getting crazy and she's done a wonderful job so far. Um, we're very happy to have her. She's still managing to show, she's still coming to work every day, so that's good. Um, I also just wanted to note that today is her birthday and she's chosen to spend here with us. So any of you that are still here with like ice cream cake afterwards, we did get some from Rank, so. Um, so anyway, so moving on, um, so as Mr. Malloy said, um, we did publish the white book. It went out on Friday. The entire book went out. Um, in the packet tonight, we did not put a slide deck presentation, because we will have one that we'll go through in detail this Thursday at the Budget Summit Three, which is to cover the White Book. But in the packet tonight, we did put the budget overview page, the program summary, which kind of gives you the high-level overview of all of the municipal departments and the school department, what they're requesting for personal services and expenses. Um, it also has a little summary in there of capital and then, um, we also put in the packet tonight, the program improvement requests. Um, those were all items, those program improvements that you saw during the Select Board budget hearings back at the end of November and early December. Um, and we put the summary in the packet tonight of what the town manager is recommending to be funded, both from the general fund, from other non-general fund sources, including ARPA. Um, and so that's a little bit of a change. Um, we have never put ARPA requests in the budget before, but we did think it was important just based on how many program improvements were requested and sort of the available, you know, general fund money that we had, we thought it was important to show, you know, some of the other things that we saw as priorities, um, that could be funded from elsewhere. And as Mr. Malloy noted, a lot of those are really one-time expenses, um, which is really what we should be trying to allocate ARPA to and not something that's ongoing. All right, so that being said, um, I'm just going to kind of go quickly, um, over the budget overview page. So this is really the high-level summary of the budget, both from revenue and the expense side. As Mr. Malloy noted, this is a balanced budget, um, for fiscal twenty-five, we're projecting two hundred and eighty-nine point six million dollars worth of revenue and we have proposed an equal amount of expenses. Um, compared to fiscal twenty-four, this is a total increase of ten point five million dollars or three point seven-eight percent. Um, and so that's a pretty good, um, increase year over year. Um, if we go sort of beyond that, I would, actually, one thing that I just wanted to know, um, compared to the last summit, which was in November, uh, this total revenue projection is just slightly higher, um, about, uh, two hundred, I want to say, sorry, I have it in my note. Um, I'm sorry, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars more than we had projected in revenue. So if anybody was going back to Summit Two and trying to look at the revenue allocation model, um, we did come up with a little bit of additional revenue from that point. Um, a little bit of it was an increase in state aid. Um, we also made a few increases in available funds and then we actually had to subtract a little bit from, um, transfers from the enterprise funds for indirect charges. We had not fully refined the calculation going into Summit Two, but we did do that and just based on some staff turnover and changes in health plans and things like that, the indirect um, transfer came down a little bit. Uh, but overall, again, two hundred and eighty-nine point six million dollars in revenue. So on the expense side, what does that translate to? Um, overall, both the school and municipal expense budgets are proposed to go up by four-point-three percent. And that is the amount of new revenue that's, um, able to be allocated. And so at the original, um, the original revenue allocation had an increase of three-point-seven percent in revenues, which is what we could have budgeted, and now we're up to four-point-three percent, um, which is very close to what the superintendent's original request was. Um, still slightly under and slightly under on the municipal side as well. Um, but I did want to note that both the superintendent and the town manager have committed to, um, proposing a budget that is within that available revenue. Um, and so we do have the balance, the balanced budget that you see here. Um, overall, um, the municipal budget, uh, does reflect this year a lot of contract settlements, um, particularly for the fire department. Um, both police and fire had settlements, um, recently that included education incentives, which are all factored in here, and that's some of the reason, um, the municipal budgets were going up more, um, than you would normally see, because it's not only covering one year of contract, but it's also covering prior years where we were out of contract. And so, um, that's something to note. A couple other items. Um, fiscal twenty-five is a heavy year for elections, and so you'll see the town clerk's budget has gone up quite a bit, um, more than you would expect in a regular year, and that's to cover the, um, extra polling hours and early voting. And obviously, the presidential election is coming up this fall. Um, and then the salary, uh, the town manager's salary reserve account is actually coming down quite a bit. And again, that's because the actual salaries are reflected in the actual municipal budgets and therefore we do not need to set aside money for those contract settlements. Um, all right, so just kind All right. So just kind of going down. So that was the budget overview. I sort of skipped a little bit forward to the program summary. As Mr. Malloy noted, the revenue allocation originally did not leave the municipal side really any room for program improvements. But we did go through and exercise with the senior management team to really take a hard look at everybody's budgets because there were so many program improvements requested this year that we wanted to be able to fund some of them. And so the only way that we really could do that is take a harder look and kind of shave back in some other places. So we went through a very detailed exercise of looking at everyone's budgets and historical spending. And we sort of shaved back a little bit and targeted areas where the senior managers felt that they could still manage a level service budget, but create a little bit of capacity. A few things that that included on the facilities department, they rolled back their natural gas budget. We've had so many conversions of buildings to electric that it allowed them to take a deeper dive into their natural gas usage and really roll that back. The same thing occurred with our gas and diesel budgets. We, we've been converting to electric vehicles. And so that was something else where we felt like we could start cutting back a little bit on our gasoline and diesel. And then every senior manager went through and cut little pieces out of things like contractual and professional services. So overall, what that translated to on the municipal budget side is that we had general fund program improvement requests of 1.6 million, almost 1.7 million. We were able to fund 441,000 of program improvements in the general fund. There are actually four positions added in there to our full-time benefited positions. And then there are two part-time positions. And as Mr. Malloy noted earlier, those are really to address some of the priorities that we've heard, both from the select board, from the community and from our own staff about the need for creating some additional staff capacity for things that have changed over the past few years in terms of new bylaws and just, you know, new development and other things that are changing around town. We also in this have recommended $651,000 of general fund requests to come from ARPA. Those are for the most part, one-time expenses with one exception. One item that the board did sort of highlight as a priority was expanding the food waste collection program from 2,000 households to 4,000, which is going to come at a cost of 396,000. That was sort of a heavy ask for this budget, given some of the other things that were on the table. So we are proposing that to be funded from ARPA for fiscal '25. If we were going to also contract for going forward, we could probably do a partial request for fiscal '26 as well. And then we would have to build the remainder or all of it into the fiscal '26 budget going forward. So I just kind of want to note that that's not ideal, but we felt like that was reasonable and something that we would be comfortable picking up in fiscal '26 if the board wants to continue moving forward with it. We also did have a few program improvement requests that were funded out of our water and sewer enterprise, one for the recreation enterprise and one that was requested to come from a new fee revenue or actually not a new fee revenue, but one that we would like to now direct towards a part-time seasonal staff. All right. And then I just want a couple other things to note. This budget also proposes $49 million of capital projects. As Mr. Malloy noted, the biggest one by far in there is $10 million worth of design funds for the Lexington High School project. We are continuing to move forward with that and plan for it, both in terms of, you know, debt service and ways to mitigate the impact of that on the residents of Lexington. There are several other projects related to the Lexington High School and the capital plan. So I recommend that you kind of read the management overview section of the book and the capital plan. It's sort of repeated in there, but it kind of walks through not just the design of Lexington High School, but the other projects that are related to that, including the space at 173 Bedford Street. It includes some field work. Not all of it is in this budget, but there are definitely items in the five-year capital plan in terms of the central administration building and other field work that needs to be done as part of sort of the overall planning for that Lexington High School project. And so in addition to the operating budget and the capital plan, we also have continued to set money aside in this budget. We recommend $4 million be set aside from the tax levy into the capital stabilization fund. That's part of our ongoing sort of fiscal guideline that we've implemented over the past few years. And we also have $2 million being recommended to go into the OPEB fund. And that is again, consistent with our practice and fiscal guideline over the last several years. And then lastly, we do have $1 million set aside right now, free cash. That's one-time revenue, but that is in case something comes up between now and when this budget is voted that we feel like really needs to be addressed. Typically, that money is not allocated. It just remains unallocated until the year closes out and then it becomes free cash again the next year. We do also have $850,000 set aside into the reserve fund. And that could be used for any purpose, emergency purpose that comes up during the year. And that money can be released by a vote of the appropriations committee and this board. So those are really the the highlights of the overall budget. I don't want to go into too much detail tonight because we're all going to be hearing the same information again on Thursday night at Budget Summit III. I do just want to note there, there are still some open items in the budget, why it's not completely finalized yet. Some of these we will hopefully know before the brown books comes out and some we may not. I do want to note that our free cash has still not been certified by the Department of Revenue. We've been, we submitted it back in early December. And so they just have a lot going on this time of year with tax recaps and other people's balance sheets and income statements. So we've not been certified yet. We have a placeholder in here for free cash. We're hoping that before we produce the brown book, that's finalized. If it comes in slightly different than we've estimated, then the offset that we would have to adjust would be our cash capital and debt service budgets. We'll have a little bit of adjustment there. We're also waiting for final state aid numbers. I know the governor at MMA this weekend made some announcements about high-level increases in both unrestricted government aid and chapter 70. So that's great. I think that actually our budget is in line, probably a little bit on the conservative side in terms of stated revenue. But we do not have, do not have an actual cherry sheet yet. So we're going to have to wait for that in order to see exactly where that ends up. And then health insurance is sort of a wild card. We had originally projected, I think, six or eight percent and then eight percent. And then we got guidance from the GIC that we should plan on 9.6%. And so we did increase what we're holding for health insurance in this budget, but we're hoping that that will come in a little bit lower than what they've suggested. That will be, you know, again, wait to be seen. And then lastly, the debt service budget, again, I think it's a very reasonable projection. We are going to be issuing a municipal bond in February. And at that point, that was when the debt service for fiscal '25 will really be a little bit more solid. But again, I think we have a very good projection in here. So just kind of wanted to note those open items. I'll bring those up on Thursday as well about sort of where we're at. But if there's any questions, happy to take those.
Well, thank you very much for the, this presentation. We'll look forward to the full presentation on Thursday. But I do want to say that I really appreciate all that's gone into this and the difficulty in finding the funds to be able to meet as many of these program improvement requests as have been met here. When, when we were talking about these before, I said, I didn't see any here that I thought were wastes. And I am sorry to see we can't get everything, but I was not expecting we would get as much as we did. So I'm very thankful for the efforts that staff have put in in their own budgets to make that room available for us. Colleagues. Ms. Barry, then Mr. Lucente.
Thank you, Mr. Pato. So thank you for this and congratulations. And now you can sleep for a couple of days. Anyway, and happy, happy birthday, happy birthday. I was going to ask you about the open items, but you covered that. I'm one that really likes to kind of look at my white book and highlight and mark it up. So we'll be getting hard copies.
If you would like hard copies, absolutely.
Yes, please.
Yes, three.
One of the few ones I actually want in paper.
So we will, we will print those and we can make those available tomorrow to you.
Okay. And then my only other question is, I know the governor announced some good news at MMA. She usually doesn't come to MMA to tell you bad news. But she's, you know, her budget will be coming out shortly. Do we have any reason to be concerned where she's had to make cuts recently? We don't know yet. It's still evolving.
I, I don't believe we have reason to be concerned as far as local aid goes. One of the areas that is allowing her to increase both chapter 90 and chapter 70 is the fair share tax. And so that's providing a big boost in revenue that's directed to education and infrastructure. And so for those purposes, well, those are pretty safe. The unrestricted government aid, I think, is actually up a little bit higher than what we estimated. And so I don't think that we'll have any issues with those three. And typically, the legislature likes to add some to the governor's budget. They don't typically take away from it. And so hers is usually, well, in this case, hers is usually the low mark. And I believe she's required to release it by the last Friday in January. So we should have her budget numbers pretty soon. And typically, either that Friday or the following Monday, that there's a draft cherry sheet that's available that we can actually use.
Okay. And what date are we voting? The recommended budget?
So right now, we are planning tentatively to vote the budget on February 12th, which is at one of your regular Monday meetings.
Thank you.
Thanks again for all the, all the work with this. Couple of questions. Or I guess one concern I'll start with. The food waste collection expansion is not sitting well with me, not because I don't believe that we should do the expansion, but I'm, I'm worried that we would be adding more customers. And then at the same time, have a big question mark at the end of that. You know, how, how do we fill that gap now when it's even bigger of a program? So without a path forward after, let's say halfway through the next fiscal year, you know, what, what do we do? So it would be a really big takeaway for those that are using it now. I think I've told the board, but you know, we were not using it and now we can't stop using it. It's, it's an everyday part of our life. You know, we don't want to necessarily pull the plug on, on those people that we've already gotten this much progress on. I'm just, I'm just worried that without a plan for beyond this, it troubles me a little to use this one-time source. I'm not saying it's a terrible idea, just I'm worried about going forward.
So if I can address that, the funds that we used last year, because we used ARPA funds last year, we have now incorporated that into the fiscal year '25 budget. So those are part of the budget now.
Okay.
The 396,000 that we're looking at this year, next year would need to be incorporated into the budget. And we do put a little warning in the white book about that. And next year, we don't really anticipate having such huge contract settlements that we had this year. And so we should be able to absorb that, just assuming if we see our normal revenue increase, we should be able to absorb that into the budget. And then at that point, there's going to have to be a discussion about continuing to expand it because we won't have ARPA funds available to do that. And so if we continue to expand it at that point, it will require us just to make an annual budget allowance for expanding it each year until there's no room to expand. And then at some point, the, you know, it's a, it's, it's one of those discussions that I know is happening in the community about, well, do you charge for trash and make compost and recycling free or, or what? I know that's a very tough, difficult conversation in town, but either we build it up slowly and/or we create fees for it, or we don't create fees for it and just build it slowly. So, and that's a discussion we can continue to have.
And Miss Malloy, I just wanted to add, one of the things we were also looking for was a reduction in the solid waste collection that this would represent diversion. And we haven't been, we've only been doing the townwide program for what is it, about six months now? So we haven't, while we're seeing trends, it's hard to predict just how much this will be. So from a budgeting perspective, it's still a little fuzzy. But Mr. Lucente, it isn't quite a, we fall off a cliff. It is part of our waste management analysis going forward.
I know we're not going to settle contracts, you know, as, as maybe as large for the upcoming fiscal year. I just do worry, things, things are tighter this year than I think I anticipated. You know, with the high school coming closer and closer and us not really using the additional revenue for you know, other programs and services, I just get a little worried that that's a big number. I mean, it's for us to sort of find that 100,000 doesn't worry me, 200 doesn't worry me. It's the 400, I think that gets to the level of concern. Sorry. My next question is on, if you could talk a little bit about police overtime, which, which had come up at the budget hearings and, you know, the police sort of had hit their max out on, on overtime. And I just wanted, I know I've talked to you individually, but I thought it'd be good to share with the board on sort of what's our plan going forward so that we don't, you know, end up in a predicament with, with that again for this coming year.
So what I'm planning on doing, and the board will see this in a couple of weeks with the ARPA request, not as part of the budget, but just as an ARPA request that I'm making is to bring in a, a group. The, my preferred group would be the Center for Public Safety Management that will take a look at both the police and fire overtime at a very granular level of volume of calls per shift over a course, a period of time, so that they can actually make some recommendations on staff. Excuse me. Staffing levels as well as how, some suggestions on how overtime could be better controlled and how maybe shifts could be modified some to reflect where the call volume really is. And it's a, this group in particular, and I've met with both the police chief and the fire chief, and they're both aware of this group, consist of both analysts and retired fire and police chiefs that really understand how to manage these large departments. And so between them, they've built a, it's a nonprofit out of Washington DC that they do these types of consulting studies. And so that will be coming forward as part of this upcoming ARPA request in February, so that we can, if the board approves it, we can get that study moving forward now and have that information available for the fiscal year '26 budget cycle.
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, the awareness that we are doing something about it and I appreciate the look into that because I do think that's the type of analysis that we need. My last comment I'll make is I, one of the sessions I attended at the Massachusetts Municipal Association meeting was the fiscal outlook. And it was very, it was really well done. They, they did a great job. There's a lot of things that impact the finance department and, and budgeting. And I, I know you're busy getting the white book ready. So difficult to be in two places at once, but if there's a recording of it, it would be really worthwhile to, to watch that. They, they went through a lot of statistics and information about what other towns are going through, but also about what, you know, the governor's proposed changes to some of the things. It just had a very direct impact on everything that is in your department. I thought it was really really worth the time. Got a lot out of it. One of the things they did mention was their turnaround time for things like certifying free cash is like five days, I think they said, but this, doesn't sound like we fell in that category. So. But yes, but thank you for all that you're doing. Hold to you.
And Mr. Sandin.
Thank you. So before I get into my questions, I, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Malloy last week on the budget as well. So I had extensive time to answer, ask many questions. On this issue of ARPA funding for the composting, I'm supportive of it. Not only be, because Mr. Malloy spent more time with me talking about the, the look into the future for next year. And, and if I'm understanding correctly, you're feeling comfortable moving that composting into the fiscal year '26 budget?
I, I am, just based on what we see right now, yes.
Okay. And the other thing that I, Mr. Pato's comment that we are expecting to see some reduction in, in trash hauling fees by, because the composting is very heavy. Mr. Pinsono made a comment to that when we had a, this, he says. Mr. Pincenow made a comment to that when we had a, he says, we're starting to see this trending in the right direction. So I agree with Mr. Paddo. We need to see actual numbers over a longer period of time. But it was heartening for me to hear Mr. Pincenow saying it's already starting to see a trend in the right direction. So a couple of questions for Ms. Koznov. You mentioned we have a bonding coming up in February. Do you have any idea where interest rates are looking in this timeframe?
Yep. So we did a call with our financial advisors last week, and they indicated with a AAA community, we should probably see just around 3%, maybe slightly. They said they've seen a few just under 3%. So that's still a pretty good rate.
That's great news. It was better than I was expecting. And so I've, I've heard that being on the CPC, the Community Preservation Committee, I've heard this many times, but perhaps for the rest of the board, you can give some indication of what it looks like match is going to be looking like going forward for CPA.
For the Community Preservation, sure. So the match has actually been dropping off over the past couple of years. We were seeing 40 plus percent for a year or two. This year, I, I can't remember the percentage, but I want to say it was maybe 21 or 22% match. For next year, for fiscal 25, we're projecting a 15% match, which I believe is about $900,000. I don't have the number in front of me right now, but that's, it's quite a bit less. You know, less than half actually of a few years where we were at a peak. But that's really sort of the environment that we're in right now. The CPA matching funds come from registry, from fees from the Registry of Deeds. And I think that just based on how the housing market is sort of slowing down in terms of housing refinancing and other things right now, that they're just not seeing the same kind of revenue that's going to that dedicated source as they were. So we are being pretty conservative on that. And I, I don't see that moving dramatically in the next couple of years.
So I just wanted to say thank you again. And I really, to Mr. Paddo's comments at the beginning, I really do appreciate the deep dive that, and looking at the budget from the, I think Mr. Malloy used the term forensic perspective is really very helpful. And I appreciate that we took that on this year.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Seeing none, I'm looking to see if there's anyone in the public who would like to make a comment. And we have one in the room. And anybody online, please raise your hand via Zoom or star nine if you're on the phone, if you would approach the microphone.
Don McKenna, Precinct 6 Town Meeting member. I just want to reiterate what you've heard me say many times, but I have a real concern about the use of the ARPA funds for expanding a program that isn't directly related to economic development. We've spent a lot of money. We've spent more and more money on town and municipal and school services. And we are not spending the money to stimulate the economy. I will particularly note that I've received several calls from residents very concerned that the visitor center is closed during the month of January. And I'm sure that that was direct reflection of being careful about money. But that is something that I see people go towards every day, looking to get into the visitor center and it's closed. And as we're going into the 250th, there is going to be more and more needs. And I think we would be far better served in this year rather than expanding a program that doesn't support the entire community, developing the economic opportunity to have funding for the visitor center so they can help increase the revenues for other programs long term. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no one, Mr. Malloy?
If, if I could, I'd like to just respond to that because as the board is aware, I've tracked what the ARPA spending has been spent on pretty closely. And so of the entire amount, we have five categories that we've spent money in. Economic stimulus and resiliency, we've spent 40.4% of the funds have been approved to date. Food insecurity, 2.4%, housing, 18%, pandemic-related, 14.3% in public health and safety, 25%. So actually, the most that we have earmarked of the ARPA funds by far have been to economic stimulus and resiliency.
And thank you. And we will be reviewing ARPA funding at our meeting in February, I think at the 12th or 5th.
May I just make a quick comment?
You have a couple of seconds left.
So my quick comment is, I, I appreciate that it's been spent on a lot of numbers, but the fact of the matter is we've spent less than 50% on economic development.
Ms. Hay.
I, I apologize. I did have a question that I spaced asking you before, which is that I noticed that we had a, a decrease in the human services budget, which is due to an expectation of a grant. And sort of the same question that we're grappling with here. If the grant either doesn't come through or if it's a one-year grant, we then have to make sure that we're budgeting to be able to build that back in. So we're giving ourselves a couple of places in this budget where we're taking a deduction essentially in one year, which is going to cause a gap that we're going to need to backfill and expand. So, and I just want to ask how we plan to work around that.
So that is correct. The human services budget this year, we did get a fiscal 25 grant, an operating grant that's to support the Lexpress operations for $200,000. And so we have diverted $200,000 of the Lexpress budget to that grant and out of the general fund. That is something that could be potentially applied for in future years. But to your point, it is not guaranteed. And if that were not to materialize again in future years, we would have to make up for that in the general fund. I do want to note that the Lexpress contract is up at the end of fiscal 25. That is the last extension year on the contract that we have available. And so within the next six to nine months, we certainly need to go out for a new contract with Lexpress and determine what that program's going to look like. Because not only are we going to have a new operating cost, but we're due for new capital infrastructure for those as well. I do know that one thing that the transportation manager is looking at is getting a grant for the actual buses themselves, which would then take some cost out of the operating expense going forward. So again, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces there. And so it absolutely is something that we want to call out. It is called out in some of the summit materials and in the book as well. I didn't mention it tonight, but that is definitely along the same lines of the food waste where if that money doesn't materialize, we will have to absorb it. To Mr. Malloy's point, we will not have nearly as many large contract settlements coming in the fiscal 26 budget as we did in this. And so it should create a little bit of capacity for us to absorb these things if needed. We also, in this budget, are funding quite a few program improvement requests that are now for, coming to us for the second, third or more year. And the fact that we're able to get some of those in now within the operating budget, I think will take a little bit of pressure off in future years as well.
Thank you. Ms. Hay. Mr. Sandin?
And I'm not looking for an answer tonight, but seeing as we just were talking about Lexpress, we had some good news that said that we were seeing something on the order of like a five X increase in the amount of sales of the passes. So at some point, not tonight, love to hear how that's actually linking to ridership increases.
Right. And there's been an increase in ridership as well, but we will hear a report on that in the future. Or Ms. Hay will include it in one of her liaison reports. And we will need to revisit transportation. We had our ad hoc committee give us a report, and there is a fair amount of work to be done.
I, I didn't read my entire brief from the committee, but it was through November, it was up 46% rides.
Thank you. So colleagues, any last comments? Are we awaiting Thursday? All right. Very good. Thank you. And see you later in the week. Let's move to item number six, which is to review the location for the Lex 250 monument at Belfry Hill. And we have Ms. Barry, Chair of the Semi-Quintennial Commission, lead us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Paddo. Try and say that three times fast.
Thank you, Mr. Paddo. Thank you, Mr. Paddo. Thank you, Mr. Paddo.
Very good. You know what? You can be chair for another week. You passed the test. So colleagues, in your packet, you have Ms. Katzenbach, if you can pull it up online. You have a map, a few different views of Belfry Park. So as you know, one of the deliverables in the charge that this board charged the Semi-Quintennial Commission with was to investigate the possibility of a permanent memorial. And you also are aware that we have a former resident who was willing to donate a significant sum of money towards a permanent memorial. And so we, the town was fortunate enough to contract with Metropolitan Area Planning Council, as we affectionately refer to them as MAPC. And they were able to make some space in their schedule to help guide us through this process. And so where we are in this process is the call to artists is currently out. We meet every other week for an update. Mr. Lucetti's on the call, Mr. Malloy's on that call, some people from the 250th Commissioner on that call, as well as our Ananth Udupa and Abby, and I'm blanking on Abby's last name at the moment. Abby Judd, yes, are on the call. And so we've been making some fabulous progress. And the next step that we need to take is for this board to approve the location of where, not the exact in the ground location of where the monument will be, but kind of the parcel of land on which the monument will be placed. Now, you might be saying, I haven't seen said monument. You know, this is a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. But in this particular case, for the artists to be able to make their renderings, they need to have an idea of where, what space they will be working with. We had talked about this a few times at this board, kind of in a casual manner, and no objections that I recall had been raised to this point. So the request tonight will be moved to approve placing the monument in Belfry Park. Mr. Pincenow, I believe, is here as well. He can answer any questions surrounding the park and the landscaping that's going to happen in there. And also online is Ananth Udupa from MAPC, if you have any questions about the process and where we are. Mr. Malloy, did I leave anything out? No.
Thank you, Ms. Barry. And just you said to approve it in Belfry Park, but I think it's a little more specific. It's in location area 12, which is the lower portion, not up the hill.
Correct. I consider the lower portion Belfry Park. Yeah. So the lower portion, I know some, we did have a question from a resident. Would this do anything to upset the Lafayette Memorial that is there? No, that is not our intention. Our intention is to actually draw more people into the park to see the Lafayette Memorial, to see this 250th Monument Memorial, and to kind of be curious and perhaps climb the hill to, to go up and, and check out the Belfry, because not a lot of people do that.
Right. Thank you.
And I believe Mr. Malloy, it says in our packet, is recommending approving both sides as potential.
Right. As a call, at least one of the artists asked for the ability to design something for both.
Correct.
Colleagues, questions? Mr. Sandin?
So thank you. When I look at the, the package, it shows all this topographic information. And we're, we're very much aware that the Belfry Hill is on a hill. And, and the pictures of the one and two sites look relatively flat. But are they, or am I, am I understanding that correctly or is it?
Mr. Pincenow, can you comment about the, the topography in the lower part of that park? If you're still here?
Yes, I'm still here. Yes, I can. It, it is relatively flat down on that portion. We're going to be looking at improving the pathways in there as well. So it is, it, it really starts to get steep as you get further in. And then where the actual trail picks up to go up to the Belfry.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying one and two are relatively flat?
Relatively, yes.
Okay. The other thing that I just wondering about, you know, you, Ms. Barry mentions chicken and an egg. We've, we've often approved things here on the select board. I won't say what, where people come back and ask us, gee, that's a lot bigger than we expected it to be. So I'm wondering if you have any thoughts on size?
So personally, I'm hoping, you know, if we approve the location, that then people can design something to scale. But I will ask Ananth, Ms. Katzenbach or Mr. Paddo, if you can allow the MAPC to speak. Ananth, if you can speak to that?
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you all this evening. We, we're hoping that because this call for artists is a two-phase process, that we can loop in a technical review into the concept development so that the artist is designing concepts that are to scale to the site. Keeping in mind also the greater context of the Battle Green District and also the, the fact that, you know, accessibility is a really key aspect for this site.
Just to follow up, so I'm, I'm understanding that the size will be determined at some point later and we'll come back to the board for that approval, or how does this work?
Ananth, can you walk us through where we are on the timeline?
Yeah. So we, as Susie had mentioned in the, in the beginning of this conversation, we are still accepting applications for submissions of interest, which is where artists are going to describe their, you know, interest in working on this project. And the second phase will be where they work on a concept. And after the concept is a finalist artist is selected, that finalist and the proposal will be sent back to the select board to be approved for like, you know, final approval. And that will be in March.
We hope.
March of like six weeks from now.
Sorry.
2025.
I misspoke there. April, April 15, 2024 is when we hope the artist team to complete the signature and the, the word is publicly announced.
We would like to be able to announce the artist team at Patriot State this year.
Right. But the final approval of the monument has to come back to this board. This, at this stage, is just the location we're approving for use as for a monument. But we're not committed until we've seen the proposals.
Correct.
And accepted them.
Correct. It also has to go through monuments, memorials and HTC.
Right.
And Commission on Disability. Tourism Central Committee is going to make the rounds.
So maybe, so let's make sure we can stay within this year. Any other comments or questions about this request? And I will open it up for public comment.
Sorry, Don McKenna, 9 Hancock Street. So I just want to comment on the two locations. As you know, I was heavily involved with the Battle Green Master Plan, and we had a lot of conversations about Belfry Park and drawing people into Belfry Park. So I love the fact that this is the proposed location. I am concerned about both sides. One of the things that we talked about, both when the Lafayette plaque came along, as well as, as part of, I'm part of the, I don't know, advisory group for this monument, is the notion of putting it, and I don't know what number it is on the plan, but to the left, like where the Lafayette Memorial is. I, I believe it belongs on the right because what, one of the things we talked about is it not competing with the Minuteman statue. And if you put it to the left, people are going to come across that street that we opened up the visibility for and did all kinds of things to make Belfry Park visible. But then what you're going to see is this monument is the first thing you see, which I don't think is appropriate in compliance with any of the other work we've ever done. There's one other advantage I want to mention for putting it to the right side. And that is that we've had terrible trouble with the neighbors to the right encringing on Belfry Park. They put their car in there. I've sent Mr. Pincenow pictures about it. Putting a monument there would define that area and help keep defined that that is part of the park. And so there, there's lots of good reasons for putting it there. So I would urge the board to select that site and let people design a monument that will fit in appropriately to the right and keep it away from competing with the Minuteman statue. Thank you.
All right. And I'm seeing no one else online. All right. And I'm seeing no one else online or in the room. Colleagues, any final comments? Seeing none, the motion on the, on, in the packet is to, I approve, I move to approve sites one and two as shown in the attached plan. Is there a second?
Second.
They moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And if both say nay, none, it is unanimous, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barry, for your leadership in this area. That brings us to the end of our meeting. Few other announcements, one, I just want to remind the board, I forwarded the report from the consultant on our goals. This will be at our meeting in February, not the fifth, but following one, I believe. And you each have individualized action items underneath each goal. The, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the select board will be Monday, February fifth, twenty twenty four at six thirty PM via hybrid participation. And a summit meeting of the select board, School Committee Appropriation Committee and Capital Expenditures Committee will be held on Thursday of this week, January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at seven PM via remote participation, no in-person option on this one.
A reminder, I'm questioning, what is the date that our drafts for our parts of the town, the select board town meeting reporter do? Is it the end of this month?
No, it's not the end of this month. It's in February and I am still going through the recordings of our last meeting to be able to tease out all the detail, but I'll get that out in the next few days.
Okay.
But it is not January.
Be better if it's January.
You are welcome to complete your part by January thirty first.
You'll regret that.
I heard something about a regret. Okay. So with those announcements, I move that we adjourn. Ms. Barry?
Second.
They moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned.